Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, November 16th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So for this council meeting, we'll be implementing the Governor's executive order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows councilors to participate remotely. All votes will be via roll call. And this evening, there are two public hearings, and I will go over the process for participating in the public hearings before Agenda Items Two and Three. There are 11 items on this evening's agenda, and I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance.
Counselor Tenera.
Here.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is here.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is here.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
11 present, sir.
We are all here. With that, I will ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes, City Council Meeting, November 2nd, 2020.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Accept and place on file, please.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
11 yes, sir.
The motion to approve or to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Before we get to Agenda Item Two and Three, these are the public hearings. Let me go over some of the ground rules. Please keep your computer or phone muted when not speaking. Unmute to speak and mute when finished speaking. If you're calling via phone, the unmute, you can unmute your phone by pressing star six. Just like if the public was in the chambers, please be respectful while waiting for the public hearings to start as the council needs to conduct its business. The system does not work when everyone wants to speak at once, so please be patient. We will do our best to give every individual a chance to speak. Do not watch the meeting on TV. There is a delay. Your remote access capability is real time. Should there be technical issues, we will recess and determine if they can be corrected. And then at the conclusion of the public meeting, the council will recess and the system will be cleared of participants and the council will resume its normal or the remainder of the agenda. With that, I will ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately 465 feet of eight-inch intermediate pressure gas main as part of a system improvement on South Street between 417 South Street and Maple Street, Order Number 20-1008136.
Okay, this public hearing we conducted in four stages, the first being public speaking in favor, second, questions from the public, and third, public speaking in opposition, and finally, questions from the city councilors. So with that, public speaking in favor, please state your name and address for the record, please.
This is Bonnie Coudemash. I'm with EverSource Gas in their engineering group. My address, do you want my company address or my home address?
The company address is fine, Ms. Coudemash.
Okay. It's 157 Corderville Road in Southborough, Massachusetts. We are looking to connect an existing gas main that is on South Street by closing a gap between two existing mains to improve pressure on the northern leg of the gas system in this area. There is some relatively small piping in the ground. Having this extension will allow us to connect two systems together, giving us better flow and better pressure in the areas we're looking for, in particular up towards Liberty Street in that area, which is, which is a low area for us in the winter months. The 460 feet, I believe we have one side street connection. It's mostly just going to be a straight line. There's, there's no, you know, heavy service load or anything there as far as homes, and it would, like I said, connect two systems and allow our pressure to be a lot better in that area. So that's the main reason we're seeking this grant of location is just to close this existing gap.
Thank you, Ms. Coudemash. Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Are there any questions from the public? And again, if you're on your phone, it's star six to unmute your phone. Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I do have a couple of questions. First is, so there is no pipe in this location at this point, is that correct?
Hello?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So is there, with this new pipe being put down, is there going to be opportunities for new customers to connect in?
There would be opportunity, obviously, if a customer is looking to connect in, it would be available to them, correct?
Okay. And who actually would pay to do the connection?
For the, for the customers.
Yeah.
I can't speak to that personally, and I don't believe Richard, who's on the phone, can speak to it either. That would be not something I'm doing, which is new business.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you just reevaluate or re-talk about how you're going to alleviate pressure from Liberty Street? Because 417 is actually further down. When you go up to Liberty Street, that's in the 200s, maybe even 100s. So if you just, and this starts, it's from 417 South Street down to Maple Street, and Liberty Street's going in opposite directions.
Yeah, no, I know they seem to be in opposite directions, but they're two, two systems of gas that we have regulator stations on, and what it does allow us to do is, like I said, is connect the systems and allow for a better pressure balance. So some areas, because of piping sizes, ages, load, especially load to various customers, can in the winter months see a decrease in the available pressure. We like to maintain a certain amount of pressure to make sure that we never lose a customer. That's always our goal and our main objectives with any of these system improvements, is to always have an improvement where we have better pressure available. So I don't know how to describe it, but that gap that exists right now, the main feed, you're right, for Liberty comes off another main street, but by connecting Maple and the rest of South Street together, it basically brings two main feeds together, so they're now connected, and we're able to keep a pressure level. It's kind of like equalizing it like you would with a water level, right? I'm just kind of equalizing up to bring these two systems to have good pressures on both sides, where smaller streets like Liberty, which happens to be at the end of a pressure system, they don't see the drop-off, right? That's what we don't want to see. We want to see a nice, even pressure in those areas. So this gap closure will allow for that in that particular area. We have recorded low pressures in that area in the past. We do chart recorders in the winter months to see where our low points are, and this was identified as a low area.
Can I just follow? So the construction component then would just be at the base from 417 to Maple Street? Or will you actually do construction at Liberty higher? Because when I read this, I just want to make sure my constituents know, because this is in my ward.
Yes.
Will the construction happen only from 417 to Maple Street? Or will they be up at Liberty Street?
No, that, for, for this gap closure is just that 460 feet. There is already gas main on Liberty.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors before I get to the chair?
Mr. President. Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions. One is in respect to the lower pressure on Liberty Street. One, what does that do in effect to the customer? And two, is it a safety issue?
So that's why we would like to address it. So what does lower pressure do? Typically, on this type of system, a lower pressure is not necessarily going to affect the customer immediately, but for us, we like to maintain a certain minimum pressure so that we never lose a customer in a cold weather situation. So, and you can, you can basically lose enough pressure that you could unlight somebody. We never want to get into that situation, right? So the people on that particular leg right now, they see lower pressures, they'd never noticed anything in their home, but we see it as a potential safety issue, right? If we were to lose enough pressure, we could lose multiple homes, and then you're out there relighting homes and reassuring everybody's home has the right, you know, is, is back on, on, on the stream of the gas. So for us, it's always improvement to maintain what we've set for a minimum pressure so that we never get into that safety situation.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, if you could recognize City Engineer Tom DePersio's email that he sent related to this project, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem, I'm sure. Any other councilors before I go to the chair? Counselor Landers.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I was going to mention that the City Council has, number, DePersio always does a great job, keeps us well informed. As you know, this has already been referred to Public Service Committee, which I hope to hold a meeting soon, and the engineering department will be there. And, you know, he starts right in with a field visit, and he gets really involved. Now, I got to remind you people that this will not be done into the spring. You know, it's that time of the year, unless an emergency situation, we don't start digging up, you know, our streets, especially, you know, South Street. So, but I will schedule a meeting soon. I hope within the next week or two, go through the, the process, and then it'll be all ready to go in the spring. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other comments, questions from the councilors? Comments or questions from the councilors? Comments or questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and the issue is in public service. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Garden Remedies, Inc. to amend Condition Number Eight relative to the hours of operation for the medical and adult-use marijuana, marijuana retail establishment located at 416 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 1820-1007318G.
And while I read my stuff, you want to look over there to make sure.
Sure.
Okay, so this public hearing will be conducted in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city councilors. And again, I'll remind folks speaking to please provide their name and address. So, first part, public speaking in favor. Who do we have speaking in favor this evening?
Evening. Thank you, President Osing and Counselors. For the record, Brian Falk, attorney at Myrick O'Connell, appearing on behalf of the applicant Garden Remedies. I had sent over a short slideshow, so hopefully we could pull that up. While we're doing that, just to introduce everybody, joining us tonight remotely from Garden Remedies, we have Dr. Karen Moncasi, our President and Chief Executive Officer, Jeffrey Harold, our Chief Operating Officer, Mark Curtin, our Director of Security, and David Spoljerik, our Marlboro store manager. Mentioned in the hearing notice, Garden Remedies is seeking an amendment to its existing special permit to expand its hours of operation. Two years ago, the council granted Garden Remedies the very first special permit in Marlboro for an adult-use and medical marijuana establishment. Since opening in the spring of 2019, Garden Remedies has been a good member of the business community in Marlboro and has run a successful operation. In some communities, the first marijuana establishment came with traffic lines and operational problems. That was not Marlboro's experience with Garden Remedies. Like many businesses, Garden Remedies has faced significant challenges from COVID-19. From late March through late May of this year, adult-use marijuana sales were subject to a 60-day shutdown as a nonessential business. While business has since resumed, it has not come back to pre-shutdown levels yet. And we're hoping that an increase in operating hours will make up that difference, get revenues back to where they had been, and help our 20-plus employees in Marlboro keep going. Can you just go to the next slide, please? So, back one, please. There we go. Thank you. So we're looking for an amendment to Condition Number Eight of our existing special permit concerning operating hours. That's it. So our current hours, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And what we're proposing is the addition of three operating hours each day. So Monday through Saturday would shift from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday would be 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. All other aspects of the special permit would remain the same. Can you just flip to the next slide, please? So the expanded hours that we're seeking are consistent with hours that are maintained by many package stores in the city. The three stores that we've highlighted here have the same hours that we're seeking, Monday through Saturday, and some are open even later on certain days, like Friday and Saturday. Unlike a package store, we are subject to very strict security requirements under the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations and the city's special permit. You may recall that a person must show ID twice to enter Garden Remedies, once to get buzzed in the front door, and again before leaving the secure entry vestibule into the store itself. No one under the age of 21 may enter the store for adult-use purchases. All these same security protocols would be in effect during our expanded operating hours if the council were to grant this amendment. Last slide, please. So as mentioned, we hope these expanded hours will get the store back to pre-COVID levels of sales. This chart shows Garden Remedies' revenues to the city. That's in the form of the 3% impact fee under the Host Community Agreement and the 3% local sales tax on adult-use sales. As you can see, the city was receiving over $200,000 per quarter once we were up and running. That number took a big hit during the COVID shutdown and has not completely rebounded. We're hoping that, you know, this expansion in operating hours will, will turn that back around. As Marlboro's first cannabis operation, we believe we've proven to be a responsible and trustworthy member of the business community. With that, I wanted to ask Dr. Moncasi to say a few words about Garden Remedies and the company's time in Marlboro.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate you allowing us to, to speak on this and make this request. We've been extremely pleased with all of the support that we've gotten from the city, and we have had a great and very successful business there, but the revenues have diminished very significantly since COVID-19 has happened, and we really need to expand our hours to get our revenues back. And as you can see, the company has already generated over $1 million in revenue from Marlboro. I would imagine that Marlboro, as all other cities in the Commonwealth, is, is struggling to meet the tax revenues that they usually receive, and we can help with that if, if the hours are expanded. If, if we didn't think this would create significant increase in revenues, we wouldn't be going through this process. We'd really like to get back to the revenues that we had previously, and we believe this will help significantly.
Thank you, Doctor. Anyone else speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Remember to unmute if you're on the phone, it's star six. Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curious, are your other locations expanding their hours as well?
Yeah, actually, Melrose has expanded hours already. They're similar to the hours in Marlboro, and we will be seeking the same thing in Newton also.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. A couple of things. So, because of the COVID epidemic, I know for a while...
Thank you. I know in the case of the COVID epidemic, you've had only online purchases, and someone couldn't do just a walk-in for a purchase. Are you supporting walk-ins, or is it still online purchases?
We have gone back to allowing walk-ins in Marlboro. We didn't, we were not allowed to do that for a significant period of time. We are now allowing walk-ins, but we are still not seeing the same revenues that we had before COVID-19.
And when you opened in the spring of 2019, how many recreational dispensaries were there in the state? Do you know?
There were significantly less.
Yeah. I'm wondering, well, as far as the, you know, increasing the times and stuff like that, I'm not that concerned. You make a reasonable argument to increase the times, but I think that if you, you think it was COVID that actually cut down your revenue, I think you're getting competition now. You know, there's many more dispensaries opened up now than there was, you know, in the spring of 19, so I think that's why you're starting to see some reflection in your revenue stream. But, you know, I...
And that's a good point, but if we can have longer hours, maybe than our competitors, then maybe we can get some, some customers that would otherwise go to other stores.
I mean, I, I think this is, you know, we're, we're learning that prohibition doesn't work again, you know, and we're learning also how to kind of address this, you know, that the use responsibly is something that I think actually needs to be addressed as well. Might be some conditions we need to talk about when this gets into committee. But, I see. Thank you.
Part of the revenues that go to the state are used for, for those issues?
Yeah. Well, I just, I'd like to see some addiction material shown in your, you know, in the dispensary itself, so we can talk about that.
We do have that in the dispensary currently.
Okay. Last, last time I looked, I didn't see.
I haven't been there.
Okay. I'll double-check that, but thank you.
Not a question. Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other councilors? Counselor Landers.
Counselor Pearlman.
I'm just curious, Mr. President. The third quarter was blocked. What was your revenue for the third quarter? You know, I can't... See, we, we saw them all, but that was blocked on the screen there.
So it was $185,937.
Oh, okay. So that's quite a difference. Okay, I'm just curious on that.
It was, it went from 221, 705 to 185, 937. I'm sorry, 242, 731, third quarter, 2019, third quarter, 2020. Obviously, we don't have fourth quarter results yet for 2020. Third quarter, 2020, it was down to 185,937. So it was from two, approximately 243,000 to 186,000. So it was a significant drop.
Right. I can see that. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions first. I don't know if your particular industry would be subject to the Governor's recent executive order about certain places shutting down by 9:30. Does that apply to you all?
Yes, it does, and of course, we would follow those regulations.
Okay, so just to clarify, this extension of the time would be a permanent time extension, but that it would be subject to the Governor's order? So even though it says 10:00 p.m., you would still be closed by 9:30?
Yes.
Under the current restrictions? Okay, thank you.
And that, that's what is happening in Melrose currently.
Okay. And then I'm just curious what mechanisms you all have to provide outreach so people know the hours have changed? I imagine that people aren't necessarily checking the hours very frequently, so even though you've expanded it on both the early end and at the evening, I'm just curious how that gets communicated to your customer base?
Through social media typically, Instagram, Facebook. We do have billboards. There aren't many billboards available in Marlboro, so we unfortunately haven't been able to place many there, but we have about six billboards that we are currently using, and we can put our hours on, on them also. We have a, a three-person marketing department, and they will do everything that they can to let the customers know about the expanded hours.
Okay. And my final question, prior to COVID-19, was there an example, either, I'm not sure if it was yours, or a different marijuana dispensary that did have extended hours and had seen that be a successful revenue stream? I'm just curious, you know, taking away COVID, if that had also contributed to higher revenue?
I, that I can't answer.
Okay.
It's a good question, but I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
If I may, you're just taking a look anecdotally, the hours vary widely, you know, by municipality. I mean, Hudson, I think the store closes at about 7:00 o'clock. We're already later than Hudson, but some of the stores in Worcester go to 9:00 p.m., some 10:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm. And just to follow up, is there a peak period of time when people, like, without COVID-19, did participate in purchasing at your location? Was it typically more in the evening? I imagine people really wouldn't go in the morning, but I don't actually know.
There is a peak in the morning and then a peak after work. This will increase the convenience for people, too, and we do believe this will increase revenues for us and revenues for the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Are there any other questions or comments from the councilors?
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been referred to Urban Affairs, so now that the public hearing has happened, we can work with the applicant to set up a Urban Affairs meeting for discussion and recommendation from us. So that'll be the next step.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Are there any questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and as Counsel Roby said, it is in Urban Affairs. Attorney Falk and Dr. Karen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a one-minute recess to reset the system, so thank you, everyone. Call the council back in session at 8:30, and we'll proceed with Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $80,000, which moves funds from PEG fund to IT equipment to fund upgrades for Acela for various departments.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
11 yes, sir.
On the motion to refer, Agenda Item Number Four to the Finance Committee, it is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $4,154.67, which moves funds from part-time mail clerk to retirement fund to fund the additional retirement system appropriation for an employee on military leave.[1798.54] retirement system appropriation for an employee on military leave.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city is obligated to fund this, to fund this amount, and there is sufficient funds available. Motion to approve the transfer request.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the transfer request. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to approve the transfer, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed tax increment financing agreement with Revance Therapeutics, Inc., and BH Group Tecam Owner LLC for a 79,000-square-foot facility and parking facilities to be constructed at 10110-250 and 350 Campus Drive in proper legal form, Order Number 20-108135.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the communication from the city solicitor, please.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed grant of easement to Mass Electric and Verizon New England for installation of electric equipment for charging stations on city property located at 45 to 47 Bolton Street.
Counsel Tenera.
Mr. President, thank you. Normally, I would send this to LNL, but this is a no-brainer, and plus, we have Ted Scott on the line, and this is basically doing the obvious, obviously, electric, electric, charging stations, and Counsel Dusset said he would dig the holes to get it going, so I think this is a no-brainer. So with that, Ted Scott's on the line, so if anyone has any more questions, the applicant will be taking care of the property around it, snow plowing, the overhead trees, shrubs, so it'll be accessed very easily at all times. So if there's no other questions or concerns, I make a motion to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the easement that's in proper form from the solicitor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Shovel ready? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. No, no shovel is ready yet. So, funny thing happened when I was at the Apex, Apex Development a couple of weeks ago with Counsel Landers. They put in a new charging station to go in there. There seems to be a beta versus VHS issue going on, if you catch my drift. The plugs don't fit the same, all the cars. So there's some cars that have it and some cars that don't. So the cars, the plugs that we have here fit the city cars, because the Nissan Leafs and basically the Japanese ones all use one charging station. There's another type of connector that is now behind Bank of America, which literally I can't plug into. Same thing happens across the street at Hannaford's, too. So I just want to make sure, and if the city engineer is here, that the plugs that are going in will actually work with the city cars.
So you want to suspension the rules for Commissioner Scott to speak?
That would be wonderful, sir. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow Assistant Commissioner Scott to speak. Any discussion on the motion? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to suspend the rules to let Mr. Scott speak is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Assistant Commissioner Scott.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so the charging stations, we have worked for both the Japanese models and the American models, because they're Level Two. I'm not sure it's at Apex, but when you get into fast charge, that's when the plugs are different. Ours are Level Two stations. So they'll fit all cars except the Tesla, but it can use the Tesla if it has the adapter that comes with the car.
Counsel Dusset, does that answer your question, or?
Yes, it does. I will find out when I try to charge it. That's okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Is there any other comments or questions? Counsel Landers.
Now that we have Mr. Scott on the, on the line, I, I have a question. What's the total number of parking places on this lot, Mr. Scott? Do you know, offhand?
Yes, I do. So, to get the, to get the rebate, we have three charging stations going in. That means six spots. However, this is a rebate program as opposed to the workplace grant that we got, so we're not required to make them electrical vehicles-only spaces. So the idea was to start with one space, and, and I can, we can track what the usage is, and when, we can open them up as needed as the months go by if people start using them more and more.
Okay, that's good. I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. You know, we've, we've put that parking area in there. I think it'll be used by the school, church, downtown people, and so forth like that. So I was just wondering, Mr. President, you know, how many, don't get me wrong, I'm all for this, but I was just, I was just curious. I mean, with Counsel Dusset across the way here, I would have to be, but I was just curious on that. So that's, that's a good, good way of doing that. Basically, you're tying up these bases based on need.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other questions or comments for the commissioner?
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for Ted Scott regarding if there's any centralized place, and this might exist and I'm unaware of, where all of the charging stations around the city are available for people to know in advance? If there's any sort of documentation or like map where those locations are throughout the city?
Sure, good question. So, we are on the ChargePoint system, so anybody that has an electrical vehicle knows that you have an account with one of the systems, and they make knowledge, there's, there's generic sites that have all the electric charging stations on it. You can click, you can see if it's being used, you can see what the, the rate is, so that's all, that's all on those, on the apps.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just, yeah, I was just going to say, there's quite a few apps on your phone to actually figure out where the different charging stations are. So that's actually much easier to do than anything else based upon the old ways with gas stations. But how many total parking spaces is it going to be in that lot? Mr. Scott?
There are going to be three charging stations, and each one of them has two ports, so there are six spaces that will eventually can be used for electric charging. We're going to start with one, and then our ChargePoint software, we can track when people use it.
Right.
So we'll have one designated, and then we'll have the capacity for another five whenever, whenever we need them.
So how many, how many parking lots will not have charging stations? Let me phrase it that way. How big is the parking lot?
Uh, I believe it's something like 50 spaces.
Okay.
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, although I understand Counsel Dusset's concern, the easement itself does not specify what kind of charging stations are going in. It just gives them permission to put in the electrical outlets to put something in. Is that correct?
Yes, it's just, we're approving just the easement.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much. If it wasn't going to be supporting the city, the city's cars, I would have voted against it. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Anything else from the councilors? On the motion to approve the easement, it has been made and seconded. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes, but no shovel.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
And Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to grant the easement is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jason Peaks regarding the application for special permit from Local Roots New England, Inc. to operate an adult-use marijuana retail dispensary at 910 Boston Post Road East, Suite 100, in proper legal form, Order Number
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer, move to accept and place on file the letter from the solicitor and refer the special permit to Item Number 11.
It is a motion to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move the special permit to Agenda Item Number 11. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move the special permit down to Number 11, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Application for renewal of junk dealer second-hand dealer license from Echo ATM LLC at 601 Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please, a motion to refer this to Public Services.
Motion is made and seconded to refer the junk dealer license for Echo ATM to Public Services. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to refer the junk dealer license to the Public Services Committee is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number 10.
Mr. President. Minutes, boards, commissions, and committees.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Accept and place on files the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes of boards and committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met on November 9th. All Personnel Committee members were present in chambers. The meeting started at 6:30. We had five items on the agenda, starting with Order Number 20-108132, communication from the mayor, Vicent, with the appointment of Barbara Pellegrini Allen to the Commission of Disabilities for a three-year term. Counsel Dusset motioned to approve. It was seconded, and it was approved 3 to 0. Second item was item, order number 20-108131, communication from Mayor Vicent with the appointment of Patrick Jones as Finance Director/Treasurer for a three-year term. That was also motioned by Counsel Dusset, and it was seconded and approved 3 to 0. Item number three, order number 20-100-8119, communication from Mayor Vigent with the appointment of Eileen Bristol for a two-year term. Council Dusset motioned that, and it was seconded, and it was approved three to zero. Number four is order number 20-100-8120, communication from Mayor Vigent with the appointment of Mary Watson Avery to the Cultural Council for a three-year term. That was motioned and seconded with a three-zero approval. And lastly, on the item was order number 18108, the mayor's proposed amendment to the city ordinance to starting the minimum rate and annual vacation time, as well as other employees. And this ordinance was postponed in committee, and we will table that until the next meeting. We adjourned at 7:55.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dumas. Any other reports of committees? Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on Monday, November 9th, at 8:00 p.m. We had two items that evening on the agenda. First item was order number 20-100-8135, communication from Mayor Vigent with proposed tax increment financing agreement, TIF, with Revance Therapeutics Incorporated BH Group TCAM owner LLC, for a 79,000-square-foot facility with parking facilities to be constructed at 101, 10250 and 350 Campus Drive. The Finance Committee reviewed the mayor's letter dated October 29, 2020, requesting the approval of the tax increment financing agreement with the city of Marlborough, together with, one, the preliminary application from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, two, intent to apply, three, the resolution, and four, the TIF. On the roll call vote, Finance Committee voted three to two to approve the TIF agreement, and the City Council resolution in opposition was Council Pearlman and Council Dumas. I also want to thank Meredith Harris from MEDC, the director, for submitting the compliance report that we have received in our mail. That's very helpful. Thank you so much for the MEDC. Second item was order number 20-100-8134, proposed amendment to the City Code, Chapter 270, Building and Site Development, Section 9 Fees with Proposed Changes as Recommended by the mayor and the building commissioner. Councilors discussed the revised fees schedule with the building commissioner and mayor. The proposed effective date of these changes is July 2021. The commissioner submitted the city's inspection service fees that have not changed since 2004 and compared to 18 similar communities. And the proposed changes will accurately reflect the time to process the permits. Councilors did ask for a revised version of the tract and clean copies prior to the meeting, and that the various forms of social media be used to provide advance notice to the fees to the users, residents, developers, and tradesmen. Roll call vote, Finance Committee voted 5:0 to approve the amended fees schedule of Chapter 270, Building and Site Development. Finance Committee adjourned at 9:36 p.m., and that is the end of my report. I will be asking this evening, Mr. President, for a suspension of the rules for order number 20-100-8135 for the TIF agreement.
There's a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for order number 20-100-8135, which is the TIF for Revance. Any discussion on the...
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to relay to the council my concerns about suspending the rules for this this evening. I know there is a tight deadline, given that there was an early December date communicated for the TIF. But given, you know, the dates that we were able to see, the mayor received a letter on September 29th, but it didn't come to the council until November 2nd, and then wasn't referred to finance till November 9th. So I take a little bit of issue with that, and I wish that we would have more thoughtful planning to allow for time to go back and forth between having the Finance Committee meetings and having adequate time as the council. So I will not be in favor of the suspension of the rules this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pearlman. Ask the clerk to call the roll for suspending the rules for the TIF agreement.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes no.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes no.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes no.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Eight in favor, three opposed, sir.
The suspension is approved. Eight in favor, three opposed. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the TIF agreement and the City Council resolution. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the TIF agreement and the City Council resolution. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So when I first got exposure to this in the City Council, my reaction to this was not very positive. But as I looked into the finances of this, you know, this one in particular, but just TIFs in general, you know, this is currently a parking lot. And what they're doing is building a $15 million investment into what's now a parking lot. So there, you know, based upon what we had in the prior hearing when the company came in, it's going to take them five years to actually get a product out the door through the certification by the CDC and all that. So a lot of the TIF is upfront because basically they're not making money on this investment that they're doing within our city. And the city claims to be business-friendly, and this is why, for doing things like this, okay? In the long run, the city's going to make a lot of money off of this. It's a $15 million investment. That is an investment base that will be taxable, that revenue will come into the city. It's not jobs. 75 jobs, that's it. You know, most retail stores have more jobs than that, okay? But as far as benefits to the city, it does have benefits to the city, and it helps with the tax rolls. And, you know, this is basically a company that does cosmetic surgery, which is why they make how much money they do, you know? Vanity of people. But this is something that, you know, diversifies the business portfolio of the city by having this in place, and really does add a benefit for the tax base, long run. The only catch is upfront, we're helping them get started. So that's all I needed to say.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Is there any other councilors with any questions? Council Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just add, it's ironic, and I always like to, you know, give you a little story, but my committee, Public Services, probably for about the last 10 years, every other year, we approve, all right, a request from the owner, the landlend of that land, you know, to approve their silage permission, permit. You know, every other year, they'd have to command, and I think they, if I recall, it was 50,000 gallons per day. You know, that's a lot. So it seems strange that, you know, we were voted that every other year, hoping that we would get a tenant there. Well, I'm going to tell you, I think this tenant is going to be a home run. I think it's the start of something great. I think we're the envy of probably the surrounding towns. You know, take a ride a little further west, up Botlett Street, and you've got two big warehouses there on Botlett Street in Northborough. They don't pay much taxes. Now, Northborough just had the foresight to, I think, turn down a big warehouse at Amazon wanting to bring in, because they soon realized that these warehouses are empty boxes. And what it does do, it gives you a lot of traffic. In fact, we reap some of the traffic from a couple of those warehouses on Botlett Street. They come right down Botlett Street to Cedar Hill, and they shoot right out there. So I think, as I mentioned last week, you know, when I first saw this, this TIF, I said, boy, we're finally... Because I was around, a lot of you people went around, but I was around when 3Com built that building. And they came in from the West Coast there, and they put up one heck of a building there. And it's funny how things happen. 3Com didn't make it, but, you know, we ended up with Whole Logic having their headquarters there, and a couple of other tenants there. So I see this 79,000-square-foot building. I see this as the start of something good. And you talk about technology, you know, I think they kind of hinted last week that, you know, it's really not a big number of employees. You know, I think this 79 or 86, but I think they have a salary that's going to be around 101,000 a year. But, you know, we're so automated. So, I mean, this is, I tell you, this is a good opportunity for us, and I wouldn't be surprised if we don't see one or two companies follow out there. Plus, I've read it in a couple newspaper articles already, people read about Marlborough. We have that reputation. So, so it goes without saying, Mr. President, I will certainly, you know, support this. This is, this is what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Landers. Are there any other comments or questions from the councilors?
Mr. President, Council Orem.
Council Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with the last two councilors. I would also like to add, two questions came up on their community activity and what they can do for Marlborough outside of paying taxes, which they will be for all these improvements. Even though they're getting a tax incentive, they are still paying into the tax base at the beginning for all the new construction. That will be, that will be happening there. But they impressed me when they noted what they presently do in their other communities in respect to reaching out to our community on charity events and so forth. So I look forward to having them in here in the city of Marlborough. The more biotech we can attract, I wish Mardurna would consider us next, the better we'll be. The one thing, though, is I just hope, too, the planning in the future gives all the councilors a little bit more time, not just one month. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orem. Any other comments or questions? Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to echo on the job creations. I certainly believe 76 is on the conservative side. I feel that they will be creating more jobs than that. Council Orem is correct. The city will also be getting the building fees, personal property. Those are all revenue that would be coming into the city of Marlborough. And if you do some research, some other TIFs that have been given out to surrounding towns, some of those TIFs, actually, the infrastructure was a lot less than what they're proposing for the city of Marlborough. So I think that's certainly plus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Any other councilors?
Mr. President, this is Council Robie.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I'm going to vote for this TIF, I think I've probably voted for all the TIFs since I've been a city councillor. This is a very good deal for the company. To me, it is not such a good deal for the city council. Yes, it is a $111 million estimated investment by the company, but they will not be paying personal property because they are a manufacturing plant. The only increase at the end of this will be on the building itself. It's 79,000 square feet. I compared it when we had a meeting of the other buildings that are on the site currently, and I don't think that the assessment for that 79,000-square-feet building will be anywhere compared to what's currently there. So it's great for the business. It's, in my opinion, not as good, but it's certainly something that I won't pass up on because they will be coming. We'll see, 76 employees at the end of this might be good. I doubt that there'll be any more than that. But thank you.
Council Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to appreciate Meredith Harris for sending along additional information regarding the TIFs. And I had reached out to her again, and I just wanted to share with the council, I was curious about some of the decertified TIFs from the past. I know the list that we got contained the current TIFs, those that were in compliance and the one that was not. And she sent forth a list of about seven companies that in the past had not been in compliance and so were decertified. And she also shared that, you know, the city has sort of learned over time to include language, which I appreciate that's reflected in this current agreement, that there are clawbacks if the company does not meet those requirements. But I am still concerned, you know, similar to Council Robie's sentiments, I think it's a really good deal for the company, but not so much for the city. I think it's pretty easy for those jobs not to go to Marlborough residents. They, you know, they participate in a job fair, but it seems like there's a lot of skill-based training, so I'd be concerned about that. And I do echo a lot of what Council Dumas had said at our Finance Committee meeting. I think this is a challenging argument to make during the pandemic, when we should be supporting some of our marginalized residents who are having financial troubles to give this huge tax break to this company that, you know, is from a different part of the country. I did have a follow-up question, and I unfortunately wasn't able to connect with Meredith in advance of the meeting, so if we know the question, I would appreciate an answer around, you know, given if there wasn't a TIF, what would be sort of the dollar value of the taxes that the company would have to pay, let's say, if they chose to come to the city, but there was no TIF?
I believe on the package, it was about $700,000 for the $28 million of construction value of the company.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know if, maybe President Ossing, you have from the institutional knowledge, but for some of the past, like clawbacks that might have happened, has there been an example when typically it's been monetary, that there's been sanctions on those companies, or more to help them get into compliance?
The clawback clauses benefit the city, so if they don't meet their employment status, we get the tax money. So the city doesn't lose anything if they don't, they don't meet the people that come in, then the city gets all the taxes. It's really that simple.
Okay, so to clarify, there would be like a financial burden, they would have to pay those taxes as indicated in the agreement, if they did not meet the job requirement or something else per the agreement?
That's correct. And the wording in the TIF outlines the provisions of how to get that money back should the employment numbers not be met.
Okay. Thank you so much. I do want to indicate I will not be in support of this. I appreciate all the work that went into it, but I don't think this is the appropriate thing that we should be doing at this time, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Pearlman. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just make note that there is a mechanism in place for residents that may be low-income. We do have statutory exemptions that are available through the assessor's office, would be qualifying by income or by assets, but that's going forward, that there is mechanisms in place for residents as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call...
Wait, I couldn't get to my button quick enough.
Council Wagner.
I have a clarifying question to follow up on what Council Pearlman mentioned Marlborough jobs, but I, and I don't know whether you can answer the question, Mr. President. I know we have Jason Peak still on the line, but it's my understanding that you can't legally, in these agreements, you can't legally designate the jobs for Marlborough residents only. So it just, you know, so it's jobs, but I thought, I just wanted to highlight, I thought it was a good addition that required the jobs to be in person, because, you know, eventually we are going to open up again, and the more these, the jobs, this is more people coming to the city that are going to be frequenting our stores and restaurants. So, you know, the more that we have employees in the area, so it does benefit the city in that way, too. But can you clarify, it's my understanding that it's, you can't, we can't legally say like the jobs have to be for Marlborough residents.
That is correct, Council Wagner. They have the opportunity, they try to hire folks in Marlborough as part of the TIF agreement, but there's no guarantee that they hire everybody from Marlborough.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the TIF agreement and the council resolution.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes no.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes no.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Nine in favor, two opposed, sir.
The motion to approve the Revance TIF agreement, along with the council resolution, is approved. Nine in favor, two opposed. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city clerk to advertise a tax classification public hearing for December 7th, 2020, please.
Okay, so noted, and that's a good heads up for the councilors, that the public hearing for the tax classification will be our next meeting, three weeks away, December 7th, at 8 o'clock, and the mayor will be providing the package on the taxes for the folks to review. All right, just a heads up.
Council Irish.
And then on the last note, Finance Committee will be meeting on November 23rd, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. to take up a $80,000 transfer request. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Are there any other reports of committees?
Mr. President, this is Council Robie.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an Urban Affairs Committee report from November 5th. We had two items on our agenda. The first one was order number 20-108085, which was the application for viewpoint sign and awning for an electric message board sign on behalf of Dunkin' Donuts, 269 East Main Street, MAP 58, Parcel 69A. We began the meeting with the petitioner telling us about the new menu board and the remodel of the store and upgrading the ordering capabilities with this new menu board. We discussed the draft special permit decision, and we made a couple of changes in committee. We added a new number eight to the procedural findings to read at the public hearing, no public spoken favor or against the permit. We added a condition, number one, to delete letters A, B, and C, so it simply reads in part. In addition, the menu sign shall be turned off when the restaurant is not open for business. And we added a new condition, number three, to place a sign on the west side of the property to warn motorists of height clearance. Council Dusset moved to recommend approval of the LED electronic message menu sign permit as amended. The motion was seconded, and the vote carried five-zero. I will ask for a suspension this evening to have this referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form. The second item that we took up was order number 16-20-106443AAF, which was an application for three previously installed signs, Aviva, Trattoria, 142 Apex Drive. for three previously installed signs, Aviva, Trattoria, 142 Apex Drive. The discussion began with Attorney Erickson stating the case for why the signs should be approved. He reviewed the language in the hospitality and recreation mixed-use overlay district, approved by the council. I then read the letter from Ethan Lippett, the code enforcement officer. I also reminded people that the amended HRMUOD made it clear the city council has site plan approval authority for signs within the project, and applications were not submitted to the council until after the building signs were cited by code enforcement. The committee held a lengthy discussion regarding the signs and their characteristics, more specifically, the excess of size, the primary purpose to attract customers to the restaurant, the negative depiction of members of Italian descent, the ramifications of approving the signs when other restaurants are also struggling to attract business, especially in these times of COVID-19. The chair reiterated all there was language for the council to vary the requirements of Section 8 signage. It did not allow the body to waive the provisions that specifically state, no sign shall be painted or posted directly on the exterior surface of any wall. Council Dusset moved to deny the sign application for the four-by-four flat wall sign. The motion was seconded, and the vote carried 5 to 0. Council Dusset moved to deny the sign application for the 30-by-16 flat wall sign. The motion was seconded, and the vote carried 5-0. And Council Dusset moved to deny the sign application for the 79-by-10-foot flat wall sign. That was also seconded, and the vote carried 5 to 0. I am asking for a suspension this evening to be able to vote on all of those motions to deny this evening.
Thank you, Council Roby. On the first one, Order Number 8085, the Dunkin' Donuts sign, a motion to suspend the rules. Ask the clerk to call the roll. Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to suspend the rules is approved. Eleven in favor and unopposed. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to have this referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the solicitor to place the permit in proper legal form. Is there any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to say, as part of the conversation we had with them, was basically placing the third sign to warn motorists about the height clearance. What they did is put in a new post system on the entrance that's very visible from the parking lot, addresses the problem really well, and I got a compliment for actually taking that effort, so.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Anyone else? On the motion to refer to the solicitor, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to refer to the solicitor to put in proper form is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. On Order 6643, there is a motion to suspend the rules. Ask the clerk to call the roll. Council Tenera.
Yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Yes. Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
And Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to suspend the rules is approved. Eleven in favor and unopposed. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to deny first the sign application for the four-by-four flat wall sign. This one depicts, has language that includes Italian-inspired, locally-made.
Motion made and seconded to deny the sign permit. Again, affirmative vote is to deny. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a complete blatant disregard for what we had set up as far as signage in Apex. And the people involved with this business came in and apologized for what they did. And I just want to make sure that if they were truly apologizing for what they did, they actually take these down sooner rather than later. Aside from that, it's just crocodile's tears, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other comments or questions? On the motion to deny, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, and remember, a yes vote is to deny. Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes, to deny.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to deny the four-by-four sign is approved. Eleven in favor of denial, zero opposed. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to deny the 30-by-16 flat wall sign.
Motion is made and seconded to deny the 30-by-16 flat wall sign. Again, a reminder, a affirmative vote is to deny the sign. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to deny is approved. Eleven in favor and unopposed. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which was to deny the application for a 79-by-10 flat wall sign.
The motion is made and seconded to deny the 79-foot-by-10-foot flat wall sign. Again, affirmative vote is to deny. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, I think, if I may, Council Orem.
Council Orem.
And I just want to make sure it's noted, that we're talking in feet, correct?
That is correct, Council Orem.
Thank you.
On the motion to deny, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes, to deny.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to deny, it is approved. Eleven in favor and unopposed. Are there any other reports of committees? Hearing none, Agenda Item Number 11. Order Number 20-108062B, an application for special permit by Local Roots New England Inc. to operate an adult-use marijuana retail dispensary at 910 Boston Post Road East, Suite 100. And the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve as amended. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The council does have the special permit in proper legal form from the solicitor on the packet this evening. As was mentioned already by the clerk, I would move to approve the recommendation of committee, which was to approve the special permit.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the special permit. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions. To read the conditions, thank you. The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the city of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment subject to the following conditions. Which conditions shall be binding on the applicant and its successors and/or signs? Number one, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the city of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Two, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant and its successors and/or signs agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Three, site plan review. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review in accordance with the City of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit as required by Chapter 650, Section 32E of the zoning ordinance. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has complied with all conditions. Subsequent site plan review shall be consistent with the conditions of the special permit and the plans submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city council as a special permit granting authority. Four, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application in, as amended or revised during the application hearing process, before the city council and/or the city council's Urban Affairs Committee are herein incorporated into and become part of this special permit and becoming their conditions and requirements are the same unless otherwise altered by the city council. Five, compliance with state requirements. In accordance with Chapter 650, Section 1846(c) of the zoning ordinance, the U shall comply with all statutes and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the licensure of and operation of an adult-use marijuana retail establishment. Six, security. A, as shown in the plans, the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall maintain a secure entrance lobby waiting area, providing a physical separation between the exterior door of the unit and the interior areas of the unit where marijuana and marijuana-infused products are dispensed and sold, with security personnel available during operating hours to screen individuals arriving at the unit to ensure that interior areas of the unit are only accessible to qualified patients/ caregivers or persons over the age of 21, and to ensure that no individuals pose a direct threat to the health or safety of others. B, the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall maintain a secure pickup/dropoff area for patients, customers, and products. C, the U shall have opaque exterior windows. D, the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall maintain adequate staffing so customers may make purchases in an efficient manner to avoid queuing and impacts on neighboring uses. E, the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall maintain surveillance cameras capable of 24-hour video recording, archiving recordings, and the ability to immediately produce images in, on, and around or at the use. Seven, processing and odors. There shall be no processing or manufacturing of marijuana or marijuana-infused products as part of the use. Marijuana and marijuana products shall be prepackaged and sealed prior to arriving at the site. Any odors associated with marijuana and marijuana-infused products shall be limited to the interior of the unit. There shall be no onsite consumption or use of marijuana or marijuana-infused products associated with the use. Eight hours, the maximum hours of operation of the U shall be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Nine, contact information. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall provide current contact information of management and staff to the chief of police, the building commissioner, and the city council. Ten, annual reports. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall submit to the city council the same annual reports that must be provided to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. Eleven, inspection and records. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall make the U available for regular inspections by city officials or their agents, and shall provide city officials or their agents with access to the same records which are available for inspection to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. Twelve, background checks. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall require that employees undergo a criminal background check, including without limitation to query, and an additional background check by the chief of police, who shall have the authority to disapprove the employment of any person or persons as a result of said background check. Thirteen, unrelated materials. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall not make available for sale as part of the use any materials or items unrelated to the purposes of registration by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, including without limitation tobacco products, clove cigarettes, or e-cigarettes. Fourteen, police detail. The applicant and its successors and/or signs shall employ a City of Marlboro police detail at the site during all operating hours for the first 60 days after the commencement of operations, unless the chief of police determines in a letter filed with the city council that a police detail is not necessary during certain times of the day. Within the 60-day period, if the chief of police determines in a letter filed with the city council that a police detail is not necessary during any hours of operation, then the applicant shall stop employing a City of Marlboro police detail. Otherwise, at the end of the 60-day period, if the chief of police determines in a letter filed with the city council that a police detail is still necessary during all operating hours or certain times, then the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall continue to employ a City of Marlboro police detail until deemed unnecessary by the chief of police in a letter filed with the city council. In the event the City of Marlboro police detail is not available, when required, the applicant and its successors and/or signs shall obtain a private detail. Fifteen, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and its successors and/or signs at its expense shall record this special permit in the Middle sex county South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed, with no appeal having been filed and before the applicant has applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the city council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office. Any discussion on the special permit? Hearing none. On the motion to approve the special permit, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Dusset. Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the special permit is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Mr. President. Council Tenera. Motion to adjourn. Get out of here. I mean, motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Roby.
Council Roby votes yes.
Council Osing.
Council Osing votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
And Council Tenera.
Council Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to adjourn is approved. Eleven in favor and unopposed. We are adjourned at 9:28. Have a good evening, everyone.
Yeah, wishing everyone a health, safe Thanksgiving.